Is there any emergent changes to the agenda? Seeing none.
Chair, if we could, with our consent agenda, as always, pull out the superintendent's report and the chair report as well, please.
Previous chair report. Thank you. Declaration of conflict of interest that the Board of Trustees declare if they have any conflicts of interest relating to agenda items on the September 2019 board meeting, and if so, should declare them. Is there any conflicts? Seeing none. Yes, we did at the beginning when we opened up. I'd like to welcome everybody back and like to introduce Ron as our ATA rep. Is that correct? Thank you. Discussion items. Our superintendent, CEO, Board Self-Evaluation. What? Sorry, I'm new to this, so I'll do our superintendent report, please.
All right. Thank you. So Nikki pulls up the document on the screen there for you to review. Just highlight a few of the areas that happened through the months of July and August. And that would be our Faces session. I'll begin with that. Our summer session saw over 430 students participate again this year. And I was fortunate to be able to attend two of those parent evenings for two different sessions. And it just amazes me every year, the impact that the Faces program has on not only students, but on the parents as well. Some of us, senior admin, were talking about our experiences as we attended and, you know, comments from the parents like, is there something like this for parents? Was there. And some of the parents even hugged some of the senior admin here as well because they saw the change and the impact that it had on their kids, and they were pretty excited about it. So we're very proud of the Faces program and the partnership that we have with the Faces Corporation. I'm probably most excited, though, that out of the 10 sessions that were held this year, we had senior admin and/or trustees at just about every session. So that was very, very exciting to see. I know the Faces staff were very happy to have our presence there. We even had representation from the Ministry of Education and some local politicians as well that were able to show up for those events. And so it's always a fantastic experience. The Divisional Day address, I'll skip down a little bit. Talking about what does the future look like in Livingston Range, most of you were able to attend. And I did a little bit of a look back at where we've been as a jurisdiction and where we are now to provide a little bit of context for, we've had a lot of growth and a lot of success over the last several years, but we still have work to do. And so I encourage staff to participate in a divisional survey to provide trustees and senior admin with some input into our priorities. We've probably had between 40 and 50 responses the last time that I looked at that. So we'll encourage our administrators to remind their staff to take a few minutes and to fill that out. It's only two simple questions. It won't take too long. One of the highlights through the summer, just prior to the school year beginning, is the opportunity to participate in the new teacher orientation. We had more new teachers this year than we were anticipating at first, which is always exciting to welcome those new, fresh faces to our division. We have 18 that have joined us either on probationary contracts or temporary contracts that would last the majority or the entire school year. We try to invite them to attend with us as well. And so those 18 new teachers are representing 12 of our schools. So almost every school has at least one new teacher in it. As the trustees know, the changes that came about from the School Act to the Education Act and the regulations took a lot of work this summer. There were regular meetings that occurred, and it will be an ongoing process this year as we change our policies and edit them to align with the Education Act and to reference the Education Act and the regulations as opposed to the School Act. I think I will talk about some of the other items a little bit later on. And just some key areas coming up next month. We have a meeting with the Minister of Education coming up next week on September 19th. So that will be an exciting opportunity for the Board and senior admin. And our teacher-to-teacher mentorship program, which is a two-year program now, will see not only our brand-new teachers, but the teachers that were with us one year. Join us back again for some professional development as we go throughout the year. We'll meet with them probably three or four times. Any questions on any of those items? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Chair report?
Thank you very much. Just want to take this opportunity again, was able to attend the Faces celebration, like a number of you were. And I had a privilege of having our MLA Roger Reed and our MP John Barlow attend that night as well. And they were so impressed with the program, like everyone else who gets to see it up close and personal, our dedicated staff. And what they do is amazing. And it's so critical that I think we share our, continue to share our story of our uniqueness and the programming that we offer here, especially in light of talks of change in education funding and what have you. We need to ensure that these programs can continue on and to flourish. So it is there to enhance not only the students in our jurisdiction, but as you know, so many others that come within our borders to experience that. So I'm so excited for that opportunity. And again, just want to thank our vice chair for the support over the last two years. She's done an amazing job and set the bar so high for a vice chair that it's a hard act to follow, but I'm excited for our new leadership and their passionate approach that's going to continue to help us learn and grow as a board together. So it's some exciting times. But if there isn't any other questions, that's all I have for my report.
Mr. Mickey?
I was fortunate, fortunate enough to be able to attend the Faces final meeting they had in Clarisom. And thanks should go out to all the volunteers there. There were like 420 students. And a group of volunteers prepared their breakfast for them and the lunch for them as well. And that was a lot of work. And I'd like to thank those people, you know, for spending all, you know, like from early morning until later in the afternoon, preparing lunches for those students and their meals for them. So so many thanks out for all the volunteers who were there.
That's great. Thanks, John. I also would like to echo to Brad that it's been great working under him as board chair alongside him. You may still expect a few phone calls. Moving on then to our discussion items. Our superintendent, CEO, Board Self-Evaluation. I just want to say that Jim Gibbons has been secured for doing our Board Self-Evaluation, and it's scheduled for October 23, 2019. So you'll be receiving your evaluation package soon. And so make sure that you're able to get it done when it's due. More information to come for that date. Moving on to E2, Organizational Chart. Daryl Segwin, Superintendent, Review Updates Made to the 2019-2020 LRSD Organization Chart.
All right. The majority of this you've seen in the past, but there has been a few tweaks that were made in the summer. And so I just wanted to present to you the final version that will be, actually, I think Nikki's already got it up on our website. But of course, as you know, moving from having three directors to no directors now has caused some shuffling around and realignment of some of the responsibilities in our jurisdiction. And so this is the latest version. And also, we were able to add Roger Doucette as the acting principal up at JT Foster School as well. So I wouldn't, I don't think there's significant changes from when you've seen it last, but I did want to make you aware that there were a couple of tweaks that did occur in the summer, and it's now in its final revision and posted up on the website. Any questions for me on that?
Mr. Mickey?
Is Jaclyn Clark, the new principal at the Willow Creek High School, is she still going to be the home education person as well?
Yeah, we spoke about this in the spring a little bit, that Jackie was at Granum at the time where she took on that responsibility and did a great job in helping us get off the ground with a more robust home education program. And so in speaking with her over the latter part of the last school year, I guess she was very hesitant to let that responsibility go. She took a lot of ownership in it and would like to see it develop a little further before, you know, relinquishing that responsibility. So we did speak and make some arrangements, provide her with a little extra administrative time to be able to handle that as well as her new responsibilities at Willow Creek Composite. And then we've added some teachers that will be under her, responsible for more of the contact with the families and the students to deliver the program.
No other questions? Okay. E3, Inspiring Leadership Program. Daryl Segwin, Superintendent, will present the Inspiring Leadership Program to the Board of Trustees. While the Inspiring Leadership Course is both formal and informal leaders and will be of benefit to anyone interested in further development of their leadership skills, preference will be given to those who aspire to school administration.
All right. I'll take a couple of minutes for this. You've seen this document now. You've had a chance to review it in your consent agenda. And you've heard me speak to the intent of this back in the spring. And so where this really evolved is we usually start with our advertising for new administrative positions before we fill any teacher positions. And through the course of those advertising and filling the positions, and it's been kind of like this the last couple of years, I've been more concerned in recent years about not the number of applicants, but the quality and depth of applicants that do apply to our jurisdiction for school leadership. Fortunately, we've been able to still hire the best people for the position, and we've got great leadership in place. But it is a trend that's happening kind of around the province where, for whatever reason, whether it's people aren't as interested in getting into school administration or just have not the most positive view of school administration. I wanted to be a little more proactive and develop a program that we could enhance and encourage those within our own school divisions to prepare themselves and to look at themselves as potential leaders down the road. It could be for school administrative positions, but it could also be for leadership within their school. And so through the summer, Richard and I met with David George, who's a retired administrator from Medicine Hat Public, who is also a Franklin Covey facilitator now. And so we were talking about our desire, and David did the bulk of the work, but obviously a few tweaks from Richard and I. And we developed this six-contact-point, I guess, Inspiring Leadership Course. Three of the days will be full days. That will be offered during inter-school collaboration days, and they will be complemented by three evenings. And you can see on the flyer there, the different aspects of various leadership principles and topics that will be discussed. So many of those things fall within the Leadership Quality Standard, the new standard for principals at school administration in the province of Alberta. And so this will be a great opportunity. Right now, I think we've got just around 10 who are interested and who have signed up already, but it is early in the school year with lots of busy things happening. So we expect that number to grow. We're hoping for around 20. So I think we're halfway there. Do you have any questions for me about the program at all? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Daryl. I think this is really great to be offered this within Livingston Range and, again, promote leadership from within. It's awesome. Thank you. E4, Student School Travel.
All right. I'll take a few minutes. We've got a lot of student trips planned right now, and they've filled out the appropriate documents for the superintendent-approved trips. And for these ones where students are leaving the province, I will inform the Board that these are happening. So the first one I'll touch on is, I've got lots of little notes here because the files are pretty big. All of, I should preface this just by saying, all of these trips go through a few stages. So one is, we look at the curricular connections and make sure that there's connections to that curriculum that will enhance student learning opportunities and solidify some of the teaching that is already occurring in our schools. The second step is a risk assessment, so ensuring that there's proper supervision, that proper steps have been taken for any and all types of activities that our students are participating on. And just to make sure we've got the proper supervision for those various events and places. So the first one I'll touch on is, FP Walsh has, through Experiences Canada Exchange, made application to take 22 high school students to Kitchener, Ontario, on a social studies tour to enhance their understanding of Canada. So in later this month, in September, FP Walsh students will be hosting students from Kitchener for about eight or nine days. And while they're here, some of the things they're going to be doing is visiting some of the local attractions, Nanton Bomber Command, Frank Slide, the Empress Theatre, local Hutterite Colony, and a few other attractions around the area. When our students go to Kitchener, they're going to not only experience life in a big high school, something that will be a bit of a shock for some of them, coming from a smaller school setting, but they will also see other attractions down there, Niagara Falls. And there's a fort that they're going to visit, Heritage Village, the CN Tower. And so they've heard about all these places, and they'll get an opportunity to experience them and to be with their host families. The second one I'll mention here is a JT Foster Leadership Conference. JT Foster students have had a long history of school leadership. They've supported student leadership conferences for a number of years. And so this year, the event is happening in Abbotsford, BC, from September 24th to 29th. There will be four students from JT Foster traveling with Joelle Gamache, the acting assistant principal there. They, when they're actually in Abbotsford, they will be billeted out with other youth. And it's your typical student leadership concert, or conference. So lots of fun activities and to develop school spirit and to develop their own leadership capacity. And so this certainly aligns well with our Regional Council of Student Leaders program, where we try to enhance and develop student leaders within our jurisdiction so that they can go back and have a voice and improve their schools. So that one's occurring September 24th to 29th. The last one I'll mention is a trip with CCHS students. So Krista McDonald and Ryan Peebles, teachers at CCHS, have been involved, and the school generally has been involved, in several exchanges with students in, I think it's Kite, Finland. And so this is an ongoing relationship that has been developed over time. Earlier this year, a group of students from Finland spent about a week in the Crow's Nest Pass, staying with our students and their families. And now in October, a group of 12 students from CCHS, grades 11 and 12, will travel to Kite. They'll be spending time in the school there and in the community. And one of the things that they've been doing is, they'll do this in both, they did this in the Crow's Nest Pass, and they will do this in Kite, is my understanding. They will, they've researched, composed, and published little books, picture books, and built little free libraries that you maybe have seen around the community in the Crow's Nest Pass. And it sounds like they're doing a similar thing in Kite when they head over there in October. They will also receive some special projects credits for their participation in that trip as well, and their work here while the exchange students came here, and then their work over there, putting all that together and the other projects that they're working on. Looks like they'll be getting some special projects credits for that as well. So we've got three trips coming up in the next month or six weeks. Do you have any questions about any of those trips and opportunities for our kids?
Thank you. No, those sound like amazing opportunities. Just a question about that trip to Finland. How many chaperones are going in? Are they all staff members, or are there any parents involved in that?
Let me just double-check. I know the two teachers, and there's about 12 kids, from my understanding. So there will be, they will, they will travel with the kids over there, and then there'll be local supervisors to assist with the activities around there. And the kids will be staying with billeted families.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you.
E5, Board Approval for Outside Positions. At this point, I'd like to table this for discussion at the end of the board meeting. As a board, we have not had a chance to see if anybody was seeking any outside positions. Action item, moving on to action items. F1, Board Meetings and Committee of the Whole Meeting Dates.
All right. Yes, one more, I think, here.
Should I do the recommendation first?
Oh, yes, you probably should.
Recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the revised meeting schedule for the meeting of the whole breakfast with the board meetings as presented or amended. Can I get somebody to make that motion? Lacey? Go ahead, Mr. Segwin.
All right. Just when Nikki pulls that up so that you can see it, there was a need to make a slight change. And I always bring this to, whenever we change the schedule, I want to bring it to the Board for approval. On Wednesday, November 27th, I'm trying to remember in my, and I'm having a hard time thinking, I think it was held out at a different school. And on that day, we usually have a meeting here at Division Office, going through the AERR and the three-year plan and audited financial statements. And so to have that, I think it may have been Lundbrig School, and to have it out, do the breakfast with the board out there, and then come back here for the meeting, it just seemed to be more probably efficient and effective if we were to schedule a visit with a school in town, and then we could still keep that meeting on schedule as normal. And then, so what I did was, I made a switch with FP Walsh and Lundbrig in the years that they are going to be visited, and just present that to the Board and hope that that makes sense and that the Board will be able to approve that change.
Did we not visit FP Walsh already?
No, we were scheduled to, but Sterling was away at the time, and so we moved it to WAD and bumped them back. So, yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Carrie. F2, Professional Learning Recommendation, that the Board of Trustees approve the following trustees to attend professional development. I don't know if there's...
Chair, I guess that we table this to the end as well, so we can have a further discussion about it.
Thank you.
I would like to mention that I think we need to have a list of all of the PD, and so maybe we should wait until, look at it, at our committee of the whole, and then the October, unless there's a session somebody really wants to go to now. But I don't know how many people really know about the sessions or the times or anything else. I should have a list in front of them. So can I just ask that we maybe table this to the next board meeting?
The only reason why I'm not trustee, I guess, would be to have a discussion about CSBA, and so we can...
Yeah, that's fine.
If we can have it at the end, after we have the other one for appointments.
I think our intent is to have this on every agenda, too, so it'll definitely be, we can definitely address it then, too. Okay, thank you. Moving on, F3, Board Vision and Mission Statement. Carly Bonner, Communications Coordinator, will present a proposal to the Board which outlines the process and budget for the Board to revisit the Livingston Range School Division and mission statements this year. Recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the review of the vision, mission statements proposal as presented or amended. Can I get somebody to make that motion? Thanks, Lacey. Go ahead, Carly, please. You can sit down if you'd like.
Okay, I'll sit down. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thanks, Nikki. One more. Great, thank you. Okay, so we've talked about this a little bit, and so I'm happy to be here again today to present to you a revised proposal for our mission and vision. So currently, our vision and mission have guided the division over the last decade. And as we focused on being leaders and providing quality education to rural students in a dynamic learning environment, we've achieved great things. Next slide, please. Thank you. But so much has changed in the years since this vision was developed, and the world is a different place, and our students face challenges and opportunities unanticipated almost 10 years ago when it was developed. Next slide. Thank you. So as a board, you've identified that developing a new mission and vision for Livingston Range School Division is a priority for the 2019-2020 school year. The mission and vision will clarify who we are and will chart a course for growth and success over the next seven to 10 years. It will be the foundation for all that we do in the division. Thank you. So in June, I proposed a revisioning process based on research I'd done with other school divisions. The scope of the project was ambitious and included contracting stakeholder engagement to an online platform called Thought Exchange. While this process that I outlined was based on successful projects carried out elsewhere in Alberta and Ontario, the current fiscal climate here meant that something of this scope and investment would not be appropriate at this time. Next slide, please. Thank you. So given the challenges of funding and stakeholder engagement and looking for alternatives, Superintendent Daryl Segwin reached out to local facilitators Cal Hauserman and David George. Having worked with Medicine Hat Public Schools in their recent revisioning, David and Cal are experienced in helping school divisions find clarity and purpose through new mission and vision statements and implementation. David worked at the first school in Canada to implement the Leader in Me program, and Cal has a PhD in adult learning and helped develop the current LQS. So I'll now share with you a revised proposal for the LRSD visioning project, which aligns with the Board's goals and which investment is more fiscally appropriate for our current funding situation. So the first step would be to develop the initial draft mission and vision statement. And at your board retreat in November, this could be facilitated by David and Cal, and they would take you through their process, which includes brainstorming, clarify, advocate, and canvas. From the results of their meetings with you, David and Cal would draft a mission and vision for LRSD, a proposed draft. And then, the next step would be to seek feedback. First off, feedback from school administrators, and that could happen at the Admin Council meeting in December. And then feedback from staff, students, parents, and other stakeholders, which could be done through electronic surveys and paper surveys in January of 2020. Communication via the division website, school website, social media, email, newsletters, and school councils would take place during January to help communicate the process and to help communicate the process and the purpose of a new mission and vision. The next step would be to create and share the final documents. So the senior administration and the board would go through all the, all the feedback and information that has been collected. And with the help of Cal and David, prepare final drafts of the mission and vision. That could happen in February and March of 2020. At the April 2020 board meeting, the board could ratify the final mission and vision. And those documents then would be shared externally through May and June and would be supported by a communications campaign through all of those channels as well. And possibly including some external advertising as well if the board sees fit. Okay, and next, I think, okay. So the investment for this is significantly less because it's part of the board retreat. The costs associated with that have been taken care of elsewhere, so they're not included in this proposal. The facilitators would be about $6,000 and then their travel and expenses, 1,500 on top of that. And I've then also included about $500 for communications. And that would possibly be for printing if we're doing printed surveys, newsletters that might be going home to families specifically around this mission and visioning project. And then perhaps some, either some paid advertising on our social media or a little bit of traditional advertising, either newspaper or radio. So that is kind of the new process that we're at with a different, a different approach. We still have the opportunity to involve our stakeholders, but the, the model is turned upside down a little bit. So it really starts with the board and these, these facilitators that have a lot of experience in guiding boards through this process and really distilling and getting clarity on, on a mission and vision. So are there any questions at this time?
Jim? Sorry, go ahead.
I, I really think that this is a good process. I think that's how it should start. We need to look at what's there and what we want and look at all the data before we throw it out there. I think it's, I think it's the proper, I think it's a good way to do it. I really appreciate you doing that.
Thank you. You touched on it a little bit about the communication pieces. And I think it's very crucial to make sure we, you know, use all avenues. I think it's really important for us to use our local papers within our small communities. A lot of people do read them. And I think that that's something we should really take in consideration. It wasn't part of the communication thing, but I really do think that as a board that we should really look at that too.
Super. So if that's the case and if that is the will of the board, then I would, I'd have to relook at that $500 communication piece. I don't think that would be sufficient for an actual print advertising campaign, but I could put something else together that would give us a better idea of how much that would cost. I agree with you that in our, in our rural area and the demographics are such that the community newspaper is the source of, of information for a lot of people. So depending on, on the scope that you want to include community and/or parents and they're not being communicated with effectively through the school channels, then, then the advertising could really work well.
Thank you. Mr. Tinn?
Thank you. I really appreciate the, the presentation. I think it's a nail on the head, a good balance of being fiscally responsible and at the same time, setting us up for success. When you talk that this process lasted over a decade, that's, I think says a lot to the quality of work that was done previously. And we, we want that standard to be continued. I, I think this is great and the opportunity to engage all stakeholders, ensuring our staff and parents all have an equal voice in this. I, I do think that some of those stakeholders, the feedback I get in my community is that that paper is the way to, to communicate with a lot of them. But in looking at that, the budget needs to be budget conscious when, when doing that. So I think part of this is we can get the scope with the facilitators and see what their recommendations are. And maybe go from there would be more prudent in, in seeing what, what messaging we have to, to go out before we design that the budget needs. Putting the cart before the horse, so to speak.
I'd just like to add, I recently had a conversation with someone that said, "Oh, why do we even need a mission and vision? Like, why are we wasting our time on that?" And I, I really think that a new mission and vision will help make your jobs easier, division office staff's jobs easier, teachers' jobs easier, because it really will help us clarify what we are doing and what we are not doing. So all decisions will be made with the mission and vision in mind so that we're using our, our budget appropriately and so that we're all moving in the same direction. And I would be more than happy throughout this process to put together speaking points for the board so that we're all in the same understanding of what the, what the value is in this process. And then when, when constituents and parents and community members talk to you and want to know, "Why are we doing this?", you can really help show them the value and help them understand that this is a really important way for us to clarify who we are and where we want to be, who we want to be and, and the direction that the division can go.
Mr. Long?
I'm just looking at the revisioning proposal where you said feedback on draft mission and vision from stakeholders. And I'm reading the second line with feedback from staff. Says via electronic and paper surveys. And the, the first one says feedback. School administrators at Admin Council. I wonder if perhaps we might get more if we had staff, feedback from staff meeting rather than a survey, actually have the staffs together discussing our mission statements and giving us feedback.
That's great. And I think that's something the facilitators can really speak to. What, what they've seen works the best and how to get the most impactful feedback from all the stakeholders. I think they'd probably be able to speak to that.
Darren?
Yeah. Excuse me, maybe I'll add a little more clarity, I hope, to that as well. So the facilitators have a process. That process is to meet with our administrators at an admin council. And part of what they will do is they will work with our admin team to understand how they go about soliciting feedback from their staff, from their parents and their community. So it's, it's, it's probably twofold. One, to get their feedback on the draft vision and mission guiding principles kind of statements. But also to train them on how to engage their community and how to gather that feedback for the board.
Sorry. Thank you. So if there's no more questions for Carly? Or Lacy?
I just want to say that I really appreciate you relooking over this and that I agree with Jim. Like, it should start with us and go out there. If you do look into local papers, would you do that in all communities? Is that what you would be thinking, in all of the small communities where we have schools? Or just in two or three? And would, would it be the same thing that would go to all of them?
Right. I think, I think any sort of communications campaign is, would be best served in consultation with the facilitators as they lead the process and through their expertise of, in this particular case, what works well. And then we can, we can talk as a board with me supporting you on, on who needs this messaging. And I would, I would suspect it's going to be broad if, if that's what we want to do. We want to include all of our communities and make sure that everyone has a chance to have their voice be heard.
Mr. Long?
We don't mean to treat you like you're the facilitator. Just pointing things out while we're together. Carly, you've done a phenomenal job since you came on board. Incredible. And when we do something like this, it's so nice to have it facilitated by people who are experts and help us through it. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. I'm happy to provide any support through this process. I'm super excited about where this can take us. And so anything that I can do to support the board and, and help engage our stakeholders, I'd, I'd love to be a part of.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor that Lacy, was it Lacy? That Lacy approved the vision and mission. Can I, all the motion carried? Motion, they're all in favor, sorry. Carried. I was carrying it before we even voted on it. F4 Ward Review. With the recent changes to the legislation governing the education in the province of Alberta, the Associate Superintendent Business Services, Mr. Perry, will provide an update to the board in the approval process as it relates to the establishment of wards and the previously approved bylaw 2019-01. Recommendation that the Board of Trustees repeal the previously approved bylaw 2019-01 and approve the first reading of the bylaw 2019-02. To rearrange the boundaries and change the number of trustees elected to ward. Clara? Oh, that's what you were doing. Distracted of me. Sorry. Mr. Perry, did you want to?
Sure. I will do my best to speak to this. Just a little bit of history. So everyone is reminded of the process that we've already, as a board, gone through. Significant effort and time and resources were put into going through a review of the boundaries and getting stakeholder feedback and so forth. And so a bylaw was put together and that was the previous bylaw, bylaw number 2019-01. Because of the timeframe as to when that was being completed, we were following the School Act. And the requirement in that legislation was that we needed ministerial approval and a ministerial order to rearrange the boundaries and to change the, the number of trustees that would be elected in each ward. And so that's the process that we went through. Is this cutting in and out?
No.
No. Maybe it's me. And so that's the process that we went through. The response that we received back from the Minister of Education was that the Education Act would be proclaimed and in, in, and would be the authority or the legislation that would be enacted in September. And shortly thereafter, within that legislation, there was a change in the, from the School Act to the Education Act, that there would no longer be the requirement to get ministerial approval or order to change the boundaries, but that that would lie with the trustees and that they would have the authority. That falls under the Education Act, Section 76, the Establishment of Wards. And I'll just read that. It says, clause one, "The Board of a School Division may by bylaw provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and determine the boundaries of the wards, or provide for the election of trustees by the general vote of electors." Further down in that same legislation, it says... Just passed it here. So, subject to subsection 2.2, "A board shall provide a copy of a bylaw passed under this section to the minister as soon as possible after the bylaw is passed. And a board shall provide a copy of a bylaw passed under this section to the minister before December 31st in the year prior in the, prior to an election year." So you can see the change. Therefore, it mandated that we repeal the previous bylaw, which referred to the School Act and the need for a ministerial order to the bylaw that you have before you now, which is a, the board passing the bylaw. And then after, after the fact would be notifying the Minister of the changes. So this bylaw doesn't change. It's not changing any of the content of the last bylaw other than it's referring to the new legislation, the Education Act, Section 71. This, by passing this bylaw, you are in line to have this come into act in the next election, which is October of 2021, which is in line with this, the legislation, which requires it to be before December 31st, prior to the year of election coming up. Okay? Does that make sense? There is also a clause in there, and I'll just bring this to your attention, that talks about a policy being required. And so going forward, the board would definitely need to dictate to the, or direct the board policy, or the board policy committee to bring back a, a policy that would discuss the process. The process that you've gone, has been, gone through has been extensive and likely sufficient. And, and the majority of what is in that policy would be what you've already gone through. So with that, we potentially have three readings of that in order for a bylaw to pass. And that's legislation as well.
Mr. Tinn?
I'd like to just thank Mr. Perry for all his work on this. It has been a challenge with the new Education Act coming in, not knowing exactly what the requirements are. And so we had to deal with a, a lot of bureaucracy on that. Unfortunately, we were hoping for approval. And with the current government, they would cut the red tape on this situation, but that didn't happen. As we see here, we, we have these motions in front of us. But the, the path now is clear now that we can just approve this and move forward with setting a division up for success in the future. So I appreciate all the work that's been done on this.
Mr. Perry?
So if there's no more discussions, I'll read the bylaw prior to going forward with the approval. So, but if there's any further discussion then.
Any further discussion? Go ahead, please.
All right. So bylaw number 2019-02 of the Livingston Range School Division, the School Division, a bylaw of the School Division in the province of Alberta relating to the rearrangement of the electoral wards and trustees to be elected to each ward. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the School Division, the board resolve pursuant to Section 76.1 of the Education Act to rearrange the three current wards of the School Division as follows. And that is as per the attached Schedule A, which is the detail that was provided in the previous bylaw. The board also hereby resolves pursuant to Section 76.1, the number of trustees to be elected for each ward is as follows. Ward one, three trustees. Ward two, two trustees. Ward three, two trustees. As set out and in accordance with Section 76.2 of the Education Act, this bylaw shall take effect on the date of the next general election for the board.
All in favor? The Board of Trustees approve now the second reading of bylaw 2019-02 to rearrange the boundary and change the number of trustees elected per ward. Can I get somebody to make that motion for the second reading? Lacy? Yeah, sorry, it was carried unanimously at the, at the first one. All in favor for the second reading? Carried unanimously? Okay. That the Board of Trustees approve the third and final reading for bylaw 2019-02 to rearrange the boundaries and change the number of electoral wards.
Number of trustees.
Pardon? Trustees?
Number of trustees.
Number of trustees elected per ward, sorry. Thank you. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Sorry, my pen's running out. Thank you, everyone. We did a lot of good work on this. So I'm glad to see for the second time now that hopefully it'll go through. Onto F5 Deputy Superintendent. Superintendent Seagull will seek the board's trustees' approval of appointing an Associate Superintendent Richard Felly, Richard Feller, sorry, Feller, as Deputy Superintendent for the 2019-2020 school year. Recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the appointed, appointment of Associate Superintendent Richard Feller as Deputy Superintendent for the 2019-2020 school year. Can I get someone to make that motion? Greg? Any questions? Okay, Mr. Seagull?
Thank you. This is something that we've done the last several years. And just in case there is a time when I am absent or for some other reason unable to fulfill the responsibilities of the superintendent, then the board is assured that there's no gap in the services and the jurisdiction knows who's in charge and been given the authority to, to move forward and to make some decisions and to continue that work closely with the board in the interim. So obviously, you know both Richard and Chad. So obviously, you know both Richard and Chad, and I have full confidence in either of these individuals, and I'm sure that your confidence and your knowledge and understanding of the, the capacity that they have will be seen more as they work more closely with you in their new roles as associate. But for this next school year, I am putting forward Richard's name to, to serve as the Deputy Superintendent, and this is something that we will revisit each year.
Any questions? Mr. Tune?
Just want to say how excited we are to have both Chad and Richard here at your first official board meeting, and we're excited to have Richard in this role this year.
Any other comments? Great. All in favor? Carried. Congratulations, Richard. F six, borrowing resolution. Recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the borrowing, borrowing resolution, which authorizes the board to borrow such sums as the board may deem necessary to meet current expenditures during the twenty nineteen twenty twenty school year. Can I get somebody to make that motion? Clara. Mr. Perry?
Okay, well, this is a, an item that we bring to the board annually, usually at the organ, the same day as the organizational meeting, in the regular board meeting. And what this is, it gives flexibility to the board in, in borrowing dollars for operational needs if necessary. So the timing of how we spend our dollars, sometimes the dollars are spent earlier on in the month. We get our money mid-month over a twelve-month time period, yet we operate over a time period of ten months. So the majority of the spending is within those ten months. And at times, the amount of dollars that are in the bank account may be very close or insufficient for the dollars that we have to expend prior to receiving those funds mid-month. And so we typically ask the board to allow us to have a line of credit of a million dollars, just for a time where we may have to dip into that temporarily. It's not a long-term requirement. So we, the reason that you didn't have a lot of information in your board package with regards to this, typically we have a document that we provide that you have the ability to read, is that we were checking into the changes in the borrowing regulation to ensure that we still had the ability to operate as such, and of course we do. And so it's coming forward to you again, that the, and I've made a slight change to the recommended motion, just to add the reference to the Education Act. So that the Board of Trustees approve the borrowing resolution, resolution which authorizes the board to borrow in accordance with the Education Act, section one eighty, and the borrowing regulation, such sums as the board may deem necessary to meet current expenditures during the nineteen twenty school year. And so the only difference in that is the reference to the education to ensure we're operating within that legislation. So again, as always, and do you want to bring that document up from that? We have a document that we have to provide to the, our bank, demonstrating that the board has approved this. And so this is the document, and it just refers to whereas the Board of Trustees of the Livingston Range School Division of the province of Alberta, may by resolution under the borrowing regulation in the Education Act for the province of Alberta, two thousand nineteen, borrow such sum or sums as the board may deem necessary to current, meet current expenditures and so forth. And whereas the board deems it necessary to borrow on a revolving basis to meet current expenditures, an amount of up to, but not exceeding any one time the sum of one million dollars, which some or sums are to be paid prior to August thirty first. So it's never beyond the year time period, and therefore be it resolved. And so this is kind of the authoritative language that the board would be signing off on. So the superintendent would sign that, and I would sign that as well. Okay? Is there any questions with regards to the resolution as it stands? Nope, okay.
On that recommendation, though, you added in, in accordance with that, should we make that change before we vote on it, though?
I think I did just, we will, I just.
Just verbally?
Just verbally, yeah.
Okay.
We'll change it. I have it written down here.
Okay. All in favor? Carried. I think we're going to table F seven because as, as we haven't had a chance for everyone to discuss their school assignments to the end of the meeting. F eight, board retreat. Recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve David George and Cal Hauserman to facilitate the board retreat on November fourteenth to fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Can I get someone to make that motion? Jim? So Lacy and I have been part of PD, and we have, we have a meeting up and coming with Cal and David on the twenty third, where we're going to set forward, we're going to lay out the plans as to what we're going to be doing over the next two days. I'm sure Curly and Daryl are also going to be part of that. So at that point, we're just looking to show you that we have Cal and David secured, and that in the future here, we'll be bringing forward the outline of everything to come. Yeah, September twenty third is our meeting. Yeah. Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Lacy.
Now that I'm not going to be on the PD committee anymore, is it okay that I continue to plan that?
Yes, we discussed in previously that we will continue with the board retreat part of it because we've, until it's done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Oh, sorry.
On your board retreat, you have the board mileage. Generally, I know you put it in there, but I just should point out that Greg and I will, one of us probably be, will be, will be driving together. So you, you know, just, just as a matter of point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anything else? All right, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Now we're on to Success for All Learners. G one is our Enhanced Learning Model by Mr. Chad Guzek.
So we have about an hour? Is that about right?
What's that?
I have about an hour to present this. No, I'm just being facetious. It's weird on this side of the table. So thank you for having this on here. So I guess where it begins, I've been touring around all the schools, talking about this, but in this case, for this group, I want to just mention that we're continuing to provide quality education, real education, and a dynamic learning environment, always looking for new ways to work with our kids in a flexible environment and, and an efficient and effective environment as well at the same time. So we were in Bentley, Alberta, in Wolf Creek School Division, and we were touring one of the schools there, and they were using what's called the Enhanced Learning Model. This, this program is an online resource for their students that is all of high school, and it provides an online learning platform that has been effective for them. So we looked at that and looked at the technology was there, and is this something we were interested in? And from that meeting, we came back thinking this is something that we, we'd like to explore, and Daryl and I began that exploration. So, so on that, what it is, is basically an opportunity for us to provide high schools' students with courses they wouldn't regularly get. So if they fell out of rotation, or they fell out of, out of cycle, it gives them an opportunity to provide them quality resources to work with their virtual school, homeschool, any kind of asynchronous learning environment, to get a high-quality program to be able to be successful. We also provided teachers in the outreach, something that was beyond what they currently have with ADLC and the resources they had. It, it provided support for homeschool students and students participating in teacher support. And right now, it's strictly high school, but we're starting to develop parts of this in collaboration with Wolf Creek to create a resource that they're able to use at homeschooling and, and the teacher-directed support. We found the new teachers, the new teacher orientation, we presented this there, as a new teacher having a resource that outlines pretty much the whole course, provided them opportunities to build a foundation. These resources are built by Alberta teachers for Alberta schools. They are, they're all-inclusive. They have videos, they have, they have resources, they have assessments. That goes beyond our current resources we have online. And these are accessible twenty-four hours a day, and, and they can use anywhere, you can have a Chromebook even, there's no need for any special technology. Provided support for staff and students participating in provincial standardized tests as well. So those in diploma exams, the teachers could see the resources that have been effective for that school division, and also for us to be able to see the students, be able to work on stuff when they're away or in different places, or not in the classroom at certain points in time. So yeah, so that's an Enhanced Learning Model. So I've gone around to all the high schools, and I've talked to all the teachers that teach high school and showed them this resource. And what we're seeing right now, there's a lot of uptake in those classes that are blended. So if you have a class that's twenty dash one, or twenty dash two, or as you said, there's lots of interest and uptake of, I got to check and see if they're still using it. So, but there's, if you have a twenty dash one, twenty dash two in the same class, you'd be able to, to have to, a resource to be able to pull from. So teacher's not responsible or not, is not, sorry, is not having to create to find different resources for both, that have resources available to look at and, and use. One thing I also want to make sure everybody knows, with this resource, it comes into our software called HAPARA, which allows us to edit that, and the teachers will edit to what they need to be able to access. So that's the Enhanced Learning Software. If you scroll down to the next one, Enhanced Learning Model, you'll see that we, this is the plan, and I wanted the board to be aware of where we're moving with this. It's, 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 I want all staff to have it by August two thousand and nineteen. I think we were successful in doing that. We provided access to it. It's connected to our Power School, our SIS, so allows the students to be automatically, automatically logged in. It works with our Google environment, and, and, and the kids are, just soon as the staff publishes their, their resource, then the staff have access to it immediately, or the students have access to it immediately. So that, that's one thing we want to do. I think we've been successful so far. I've talked to the outreach and diploma teachers, and I've trained them, initial training. We have thirty days of availability with Wolf Creek and a support person that's dedicated strictly to us. And so, his name is Cory, and Cory's come down, he's trained us, they're new teachers, and they've gone around for two days, and we trained all the high school teachers and all diploma teachers, and he'll be back again, I think I'm going to try to bring him back August first, or October first, to be able to support the teachers that requested it so far. So he's there for us. He'll be also speaking to you, I hope. Sean might be a part of that as well, his supervisor, to be able to talk more in depth about the success they're seeing, if you have any other questions that I can't answer this particular point in time. So I want all high school staff be trained by December nineteen. I would say the majority of them already have, based on the, they were excited about it, so, but I know I've missed some for sure. So we'll make sure that all staff are trained in that, high school staff. So LST, Teacher-Created Content will begin uploading September twenty twenty, that's next year. We're already started. We have somebody that's supporting us in homeschool, one of the teachers that's assigned to that, he has been creating some English lessons, and our numeracy lead will be creating some numeracy lessons for grade nine. This program only goes up to grade ten, and it's missing forensics and certain, certain specific courses, so we'll still be using ADLC for those parts, but for the majority of it, we're starting to create on our own. And that's exciting. I'm actually really excited about that. So as we go around and we're talking to teachers and training them, we're reinforcing that this has to be personally relevant to the student and to the people that are using it. It's collaborative, it's not saying that this is, this is exactly how we want you to teach. This is more of a resource for you to be able to do, do the best job we possibly can. They can take from it whatever they like. It's student-centered, it's centered around the student. So each piece you can create, you can create multiple work boards that are called to be able to specifically address student needs in your class. It's school-based, meaning that inside the school, whether they're running outreach, whether they're running students, inside the class twenty-one dash two, it's up to you how they use it, up to the school to decide how they want to use this resource. It's sustainable and it's ongoing. We believe that we want to continue this process for the next three years and to see where we're at, and we'll see where funds are at, but that is our plan at this point in time. And it's embedded in the school day and the professional learning that I do, we try to keep everything inside the school day, more importantly, to demonstrate that and use it with the kids as we move forward. So, the next slide. Those are the courses that are offered, kind of looks like that. And we'll get too technical, but I wanted to show you the, the stuff that's being offered right now. So you have all the math courses that are there, and these are changed every year by Wolf Creek and updated, and, and we have our own stuff that we would like to update to, our own resources, and keep if we want to, but at least there will be a current copy always. Social Studies, we have majority of social studies, the Humanities ten dash two there, that is not developed yet, but it will be, and I know that Pincha Creek was in Halton High School was using a humanities class, so it's a combination of social studies in LA, so. And then you see the sciences there, we're looking at Science ten fourteen twenty-four, we're excited about Science ten. There hasn't been a lot of resources for that available to us. And then you can see the bios and the chems. And then English, majority of the English is there as well. And so COM, Communications, HCS three thousand, Media Studies, and Political Thinking, these are some of the electives and not, outside that, that core group that are, be available to there. So kind of what happens is you'd click on this, and it'd bring you to the screen beside that, and they would download this into what's called HAPARA, and now I'm getting technical, and I apologize, but it brings it back into HAPARA, and they can edit and do whatever they want, they publish it, and the kids have access immediately. So, next slide. And yeah, and that's what HAPARA actually looks like, and I bring this up because it, it provides the outcomes, you can see on the left as goals, so the outcomes are evident to the student right away. The resources are there, and those include some text, but also some video and some audio and some clips and hyperlinks and things like that. So it's very dynamic, it's very, what we've seen so far, it's been engaging to the students that are using it, and then the evidence is your assessment pieces that are there. So, and then you can actually add rubics to this. So teachers have access to this, too. I will add that all our teachers have access to HAPARA, the software program, but the Enhanced Learning Model, we only have it up to grade ten at this point in time. So I'm going to be going around the next phase of my work in, in the winter, is going to be working with all staff to be able to say, here's HAPARA, and how you can create your own stuff for your kids. So, and Lacy's got a good question here, so I'll just make sure I'm done. I think that's the last slide I had, so I'll open it up for Enhanced Learning Model.
It's about what you're talking about right now. I, I was wondering how are staff being trained on this? And then I was just wondering, is this mostly for outreach kids? Can our homeschool or kids who are half homeschool, you, I'm sorry, Daryl, it's blended. I'm like, what is the mixed, okay, blended program? Do they have access to it as well, or is it for students in the classroom who are just learning in a different way? What's the main focus and how are teachers being?
Well, it's for all. All of the things you described are some of the reasons we're using that for. Right now, for our first go at this, it'll be focused on our outreach, make sure we have access to it, to our homeschool, so, and those involved in blended learning programs. And our new teachers are being brought along to give them access to make sure they have a resource that's available to them. So their staff are being trained, where Cory and I do our, our show as we go around to the schools, if you will, and we have, we train them one-on-one during school hours. That was in August when we had that week before, and, and so we've trained as many people as we could, and now we're coming back and doing a second round in October. And IRC days, I'd like to, or, no, inter-school club, ISC days, I would like to offer something as well for those who want extra. We have thirty days to use, we've used three, so we have lots of opportunity. Cory is also there for online training, if you will, or online support. So once they have access to it, they can contact Cory directly. Yes. Trustee McKee.
Just have Daryl, Brad, and then yourself.
Yeah, this has many uses. So if you think of yourself as, if you were coming to Livingston Range, and in one of our rural schools, you find that you're teaching biology now, and that's not really your major. Maybe you're a math major with a science minor, and now you're teaching biology. It can be overwhelming to teach a bunch of new courses, especially courses that are outside of your major area. And so now you have access to a resource that, as you're looking at the curriculum and you're trying to figure things out, what activities should I do for the kids? Is there certain videos? What about assessments? So now there's a whole course there that these new teachers, or teachers who are teaching a new content area, can go to for that resource, to assist them to get started, to, to watch the videos themselves and to learn the material before they're, you know, teaching it to the kids, to enhance the learning so that So that when they've taught something in class and, uh, the kids go home at night and they go, oh, I can't quite remember what that looks like. They can go on to HAPARA and they can watch the video. They can look at the lesson that's there and it will be another way to reinforce their learning. There's lots of potential for this. So as Chad's mentioned, it could be used with outreach kids. It could be used through teacher-directed programs, through our home education. It could be regular classroom teachers who are teaching two classes in one. So you might have eight kids in a social, um, 10 dash two and, and eight more in a social 10 dash one. And that's your class. And so this could be used to help, okay, you guys, I'm assigning you this video or these assignments to, to go on here and to watch. And I'm going to work more closely with this group and then they can bounce back and forth. There's also the potential that we could look at offering summer school to our students in our jurisdiction. And a wide variety, there's 35 courses there that are ready-made, uh, proven by excellent teachers who've, uh, been very experienced and have gotten great results in their school division. Would like to bring back Corey and, and maybe Sean or others from, uh, Wolf Creek to present to the board at an upcoming meeting, maybe in October, if it works into the schedule, if not, maybe November, to show you the results that they've been able to get over the last three or four years in their jurisdiction. So don't quote me on the numbers, but, um, they probably have seen increases in their diploma exam results in between five and 10%. Maybe even higher in some subject areas. They have more kids getting a hundred percent on the diploma exams than ever before. And, um, it, they have kids, one piece that Chad didn't mention, I, I don't think, was that part of this enhanced learning model is that we now will be, uh, bringing Rock the Diploma to our students in our jurisdiction. So in the past, I know my own kids, when we were in Claire's home, you know, they, they went up to Calgary and, and did kind of a review for the weekend, right? But there was only a handful of kids that went and did that. Other times, another one of my kids went into Lethbridge and did that. And then it's an expense and it's a, um, a time commitment to travel. Or if parents are taking their kids to those cities for that to happen. And the reality is not very many of our kids have that experience. And Rock the Diploma is usually taught by very experienced teachers, usually from the cities, who teach these courses inside and out every day, all day long for years, right? And so they know the material so well. And, um, whereas some of our teachers, through no fault of their own, just because they might only teach that course every couple of years, the way the rotation works in our schools, might not have had as much experience at that. And so now what we've done is we've provided equitable access to our students, uh, throughout our jurisdiction, no matter what school you're at. You can have, be insured, uh, assured that you'll have high-quality instruction in these courses. And that can be a combination of just our teacher, or it can be our teacher supplemented by the enhanced learning model. It can be a, a wide variety of, uh, options. But what we will do is we will arrange, and we have to work out the details to this. But every semester, we will arrange for all of the student, all the high school students who are taking, um, dash one and dash two diploma exam courses to come to, uh, to be bussed in. And then we'll provide that bussing, uh, we'll feed them and they'll be able to take the Rock the Diploma course through those qualified teachers that we're going to bring to our division. So it's a really neat, um, opportunity. And Wolf Creek, I believe, I mean, the interest grew over the years, but I think this last year, I, I think the number was around 90% of their, um, grade 12s, grade 11s writing the diploma exams, volunteered to participate and had a wonderful experience and, uh, felt more confident and prepared going into the diploma exams. Not only, um, the students benefit from it, but many of the teachers, um, wanted to attend as well. And it was, in their words, some of the best professional development that they've had to be able to watch another teacher, um, who's got great experience teaching this content area, um, teach the material over the course of that weekend. So it serves many, many purposes. And hopefully we're, we're, um, counting on it being a great strategy to prepare our students better, to provide, um, and build capacity within our staff, um, in these courses and to ensure that we maintain a high quality of academic standing and prepare our kids for whatever path it is that they want to pursue after high school. Sorry, that was a lot longer than I intended it to be.
Brad?
Oh, thank you very much, Daryl and Chad. This amazing, uh, opportunity. I, I got to tour the Bentley School with a group of administrators that went there. And hearing that the, the, the teachers, um, just glow about this, that it's such a, a different tool than what they have at their disposal now, to, uh, really have the extra resources to, to help the kids. And it will, Bentley is a small school. For those who don't know, it's smaller than the majority of our high schools in our jurisdiction. But for what they're able to do with the, the amount of staff that, that they have, one teacher was doing, I think 10 courses or something that one semester. And he just said, I would never go back to teaching the two or three because with the resources at my disposable, disposal to, to teach those, those 10 courses, the students were higher achieving than when they had the two or three different courses. So, uh, it just was amazing to, to hear from the staff and students that having the opportunity to go through it for a couple of years, that they didn't have, uh, anything negative to say about the flexibility. Like they said, for, for students, there were students where it was either, um, work opportunities or family life or, or what have you, or athletics. Being able to have the, like you say, the all, you need to access this as a Chromebook. There was a student, I remember one of them that was doing a welder's apprenticeship that semester and was completely full-time working in a welding shop, but at the same time doing three, uh, departmental courses and was doing better than, uh, transferring from another school and having that heavy of a workload and doing better. Because he just said, I, I have all the resources on my, all the lessons and plans and everything are on my, uh, uh, device. And I can ask the teacher for support anytime with this and it's all right there. So I think that kind of, uh, things, resources coming into our division is exciting and I, I thank you guys for, for bringing this forward.
Thank you. John?
Well, I have two questions. One is, um, let's see, I got, I got my thinking, oh yeah. On the assessment of this, is that done like online assessment? Or does the teacher get to, uh, assess like what the student does or how does that exactly work?
Look, if I can jump in with the assessment piece, their assessment resources, but it's, it's not in separation from the teacher. So you'll have a resource they can use and edit and make it their own to, to work with the students to give it to them. Some of the formative assessment could be online assessment. If I'm guessing what we're, we're, we're talking like, so you would choose like, you know, just a Google form or something and they get a quick idea where the student's at with the assessments. It will give you the tests and stuff like that. Or this, for the teacher to look at and say, well, we didn't teach that or we're not there or I want to alter that. It's, it's available for them to do it. It just gives them a basis of assessment.
So there isn't someone at Wolf Creek who, who'd go through what they had done online, like, you know, like a, you know, like your quizzes and that, it's all done through the teacher who's actually present in the classroom?
You'd have, so the majority of the resources are held in what's called, I guess, the, it, it's a separate piece. The kids don't see the, the, the summative assessments until it's time. And then teacher decides how they're going to deliver those summative. The formative though, there are some Google forms and stuff that the students work through so they can get an idea of where the students at.
Hey, my second question is, I mean, if you were visionary and you wanted to do, uh, some curriculum change, don't you think it'd be a great idea if you could develop, if you could develop that and then bring it to, uh, you know, to the students, you know, say you want to have the curriculum change, especially at high school. This would be a great way to do it, wouldn't it? Cause you could bring it to them, you know, with all the changes already there and with the resources and, and everything. Like, I mean, I'm just thinking down the road, wouldn't that make sense?
I, I like the way you think, trustee McKee, uh, cause I would say the same thing. There's a, there's opportunity for curriculum change and, and updating this as we go to, to provide a resource for our teachers to support their teaching in the classroom.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and, and as we work together. There's also opportunity to work with modules for staff. There's all, opportunities for professional learning for staff. And for literacy and numeracy specifically, we can have modules related to that inside our HAPARA. There's a lot of growth and opportunity. Right now focusing on awareness and teacher capacity to use it and student engagement, uh, is, is the focus, uh, for the first year. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Trustee, I guess?
I, uh, I noticed you said on here, on your, on your background that both Wolf Creek School Division slash and/or LRSD, have most of the courses to this point been from Wolf Creek? Or are we, are there some LRSD teachers working on some of the courses that are more pertinent maybe to this area? And I'm thinking of things like the second languages, for example.
Yes, so right now we have two teachers working on a numeracy and, and a literacy basically, but the, a math nine and an LA nine, uh, to support our homeschool. Where there's a need for our homeschool and teacher-directed to, to be able to, to have those offered. So we're currently working on those right now. The rest are all Wolf Creek.
Daryl, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think we can only have a certain number of microphones on. That's a really good point though Clara, and we want to be able to kind of give back in this partnership down the road. So right now we're taking, because Wolf Creek has brought, I forget what it was, 10 or 12 teachers together through the summer, three or four years ago, built these courses out and made sure that they were high-quality and tweaked them and that sort of thing. So they've built that. So part of, um, the service is us accessing them. But what we would like to do is to get to a point where we're contributing to that resource too. Instead of 35 courses, you know, maybe we're adding in a couple this year or by next year. But second languages or other courses might be something that we have expertise in that we could add to it as well.
Mr. Long, did you have something?
So Chad, I, I might've missed this. I hope not. Throughout the semester, you have several teachers, uh, teaching the same subject. Is there a format for them to share, collaborate, um, like share improvements and assessments and such during the semester while they're teaching?
Using the enhanced learning model, yes, they can. There's other ways they have done it using Google, um, collaboration. But as far as, as yes, you can share your dashboard, you can share your, your workplace, I should say, with other teachers if you choose. Pardon me? Inner-school collaboration is day as well too. And ISC days, we want hopefully people that are interested to come together and we can start to build some resources for them. But we can, we can take a LRSD, um, module or, or works, workplace and share it with the whole division. And you can add also on, on this, you can do co-teachers. So the discussion we had with the group, we, we kind of dived into that conversation is that why doesn't two, um, language teachers from different schools create a workplace together at the same time? And you're more welcome to do that too. So it's, there's lots of opportunity for collaboration and we hope, um, I'm confident that we'll be more collaborative as we go. So it could be a very powerful tool.
Trustee Poistress?
I think this is such a wonderful and great thing. And when you were talking about, um, students being able to be like, I can't remember quite what that looked like and being able to pull it up. I think it can be a great tool for parents too, because sometimes when I'm helping AJ with math, we're both getting 24, but it's like we're speaking different languages to get there. And so if he can show me, you know, this is what it is, then I'm understanding what numeracy is looking like in the school now. And so I think that this is a great tool that, you know, if there's a student who's using it and their parents can have access to it too, and, and share it, it can get you on the same page as to how they're getting to their outcomes. And then you can work more collaboratively together at home because sometimes you're just confusing each other. So I just, I think it has so much potential and it's like kind of this jumping off point. And I'm really excited that we're involved with it. So I think it's great.
So Lori, just one other thing to add to that is, you know, oftentimes, um, when our children come home and they might be struggling with a topic or a concept, you can Google something, you can probably find it on YouTube, but you're not really sure of what the quality is or if it, um, applies specifically to the Alberta curriculum. So this is a place where, um, parents and their kids could go to, and we know that it's high-quality. We know that it's, um, tied to our curriculum as well. So it's a quick, easy way to access, um, quality instruction in those areas.
Any other questions or comments? Nope, that's great. Thank you, Chad.
Welcome.
We're actually ahead of schedule a little bit. We have our Minister of Student Summer Advisory Panel at 3:20. Yeah, why don't we just take a quick health break? Yep. We're gonna take a 10-minute health break, yep.
Yeah. How we've changed it a bit and stuff, that'd be great.
Sure. We're gonna give a little update on our Zone Six leadership and where we're at it for Livingston Range participates in it with our, our Regional Council of Student Leaders.
Right, we're very excited. We have booked the boardroom for October 3rd and we're going to be hosting the Zone Six Leadership Training Day, which will lead into the opportunity for three of our schools to present, um, at the regional, um, uh, event in Lethbridge. The students that will be joining us here will go through a session that allows them to develop, um, an activity that promotes, uh, what leadership looks like, sounds like and feels like for others to participate in and bring back to their school jurisdictions. And some of our students will be participating in the other schools', um, activities as well. So we're super excited that that's going to happen. We have confirmed, uh, Phil Boyt as our keynote speaker, who is going to be spending the morning with us. From there, he's going to be working with our student, um, or sorry, our teacher leaders for a session to help to build their capacity so that they can support students in their schools to be able to gather the voice. It's very similar to what we're doing in our jurisdiction now, uh, to gather the student voice so that they can impact, um, what's happening in their schools. So, uh, we're very excited for that opportunity and to be able to host that. So we'll be having 70 students from, um, across the southern Alberta from Medicine Hat, Holy Spirit, Horizon, Palisir, Westwind, us and Prairie Rose. Any questions?
Trustee Poistress?
This is one of my favorite programs that we have. I think it's so amazing. I was wondering how students are selected, if they apply to become a part of the Regional Council of Student Leaders, and how that process happens and how many kids are involved.
As we take a look throughout our jurisdiction, every school does it a little bit differently. And so we ask that, um, every school provides five representatives from their school, grade seven through 12, to attend our Regional Council of Student Leaders here, where we start to take a look at, uh, how we can connect to comprehensive school health, how we can connect them to, um, data points for each of their schools where they may have influence over, so that they can start to make the changes for themselves and for their peers and for the staff in their schools. So from there, each of the other schools have another layer of student leadership. So as an example, at FP Walsh, um, they have a, um, a junior high leadership program. And that would have more students that are participating there, but they would only select five of, of those students from grade seven to 12 to come here.
Thank you, Richard. I'd now would like to welcome Nick Housinggate to the boardroom. He's going to give us an update on, and present information about the Minister of Student Summer Advisory Panel for us. Yep, go ahead and sit there, Nick. Just, you have to turn that on.
Okay. Hi, I'm Nick Housinggate. This summer I went to the Student Summer Advisory Panel in Edmonton. It was the, um, kind of advisory panel for Minister Adrianne LaGrange. So I was there for four days, uh, in July. And so basically what we did was we learned about five different pieces of legislation that were coming in with the new government. Or not really coming in, but just kind of learned about different educational legislation that has importance with the new government. that has importance with the new government, so we learned about the Choice in Education Act, um, the Education Act itself, uh, FOIP, PIPA, and the Ministerial Order on Learning for this year. And so, uh, we learned about all these different um bills and acts and we're kind of given the opportunity to kind of form our own opinion based on what we heard at the um panel and so then later on, after we had all kind of decided what we thought um needed input from students, we were um met Minister La Grange and were um got the opportunity to kind of present what we thought needed input uh regarding this legislation.
Can you expand on what what kind of input you were able to provide to the minister?
Yeah, so the main thing I talked about was um the Choice in Education Act, um, which has yet to be written and so um my group, cause um we kind of presented in different groups, so that she could kind of hear from a variety of students, um, so we kind of focused on where parent choice in education shifts to students' choice, so where students can make the decision about their own future rather than parents making decision for their children's future and um so that's kind of what we talked about, that that needed consideration going into the writing of the Choice in Education Act. And um the minister basically said that um it would be considered in the drafting process of the education, uh, of the Choice in Education Act.
Exciting, thank you, is there anybody who has any questions at all for Nick, or you, yep, John, Mr. McKee, Trustee McKee?
So what was the ministerial act that uh that you dealt with, that she had presented?
The um Order on Learning.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I think it was basically kind of like an overview of what the government would um prioritize, I don't think, it wasn't like an actual, like, piece of legislation, but I think it was more of like the government saying what they would focus on regarding curriculum and that sort of thing, what they kind of envisioned with the Alberta education system.
So you said you were broken into small groups with a bunch of other kids, too?
Yeah.
Um, and so what were some of the other agenda topics that maybe some of the other groups talked about that would be another focus that the government would be working towards?
Um, there was lots of discussion about the um student organizations in the Education Act with the um gay straight alliances, um, and um, yeah, that was a big topic and we covered a lot of ground on that and really provided a lot of input that um even though the Education Act was already pretty much in place at that point, that the um that legislation would really need to be closely monitored to make sure that um students under those organization, organizations would be protected still, um, there was lots of talk about um the Ministerial Order because there was um very little um mention of consent or sexual education on it and so they really wanted to make sure that was a priority of the government as well in updating those um courses.
Do you have any other meetings that are up and coming, is, or is this just a one-time?
Um, this was just a one-time thing, but I have applied for the Minister's Youth Council, which is basically the same thing, but it um is three different meetings spread out across the year, but I haven't heard back yet from them, I just did an interview maybe ten days ago for it.
Trustee Poitras?
So you were up there for a few days and what did you find that was very different than you expected it to be, or did you find that it was pretty on par with what you thought um in terms of the government and how it was working in the direction they seemed to be moving and and information they were gathering from you guys?
Um, it was about what I expected, it was, we, I think we were definitely heard and I think lots of the people who went were very like-minded, so we kind of got the same kind of point across to the minister.
Trustee Tune?
Thank you, uh, it's amazing that you took your time to do this uh during your off-time, uh, would you have any advice for any other students interested in doing this?
Um, well, I'm pretty sure that the application process for this year's MYC is over and um, um, so next year would be a good time to apply, which would either be in spring or September, because last year's MYC, I've heard, had application, had the application process in May, but since uh with the changing government and everything, that really wasn't practical, so they moved it back to September for this year, so the application process would either be um in May or September and as for the Student Summer Advisory Panel, um, I kind of got the idea that it was kind of a one-time thing, so that Minister La Grange could kind of test the waters with um the Minister's Youth Council, so I'm not sure if that will be happening again.
Thank you.
Just one more question, so at the end of the meeting, did Minister La Grange, did she have any way of how she would um report back to you guys on anything, any of the initiatives that she said that the the government would be looking at, or did she just leave it as to where it was?
Um, not necessarily her, but the Alberta education staff did um say that they would um provide feedback, they're kind of update us on what was happening and some of the questions that they couldn't answer at the moment, I have gotten emails back about um from the Alberta education people.
Are they updates, or?
Uh, updates and like clarifications for things that they uh maybe didn't know in the moment of the question.
Okay. Great, thank you very much, Nick, we appreciate you going and be participating in that and coming to share that, so if you do get on the the panel for this next round, we'd we'd really like to hear back from you again. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments at all? Thank you, Nick. Hold on just a second, Nick.
Uh, Nick, I just wonder if you can stick around for a few minutes, it might be a good idea for our our new chair and vice chair, maybe to get a picture with you afterwards, if that's okay? Okay, so yeah, if you just wanna have a seat there, I think they're just about done and three key messages maybe in.
Yep. Yeah, three key messages, three or four, anybody have an idea for the first, anyone, I would? Any thoughts?
Our uh, our bylaw?
Bylaw?
For board review?
Mm-hmm. Our bylaw for board review?
And Chad's presentation?
Mm-hmm, yes, very much so, Chad's presentation? Yeah, our Board of Vision and Mission.
Twenty?
Twenty twenty?
Our, yeah, our upcoming uh board retreat.
Yeah, we can kind of put those two together, our Board Retreat slash Board Vision Mission, how we're moving forward as a jurisdiction. Everybody good with that?
The only other thing I might add, not a fourth item, but just something to highlight, our assignments, maybe a chance to briefly mention the role of trustee in some of the committees and work that we do, uh, we just got organized again, we could all just highlight one, maybe one of the things that we we do to our school councils, one of the other things that they might not see, if you're on negotiations or you're on another one of those, if if we share something personal about us as we go out with our school councils, I think that might be something neat to expand what uh their understanding of the role of the trustee is.
Okay. Great. All right, so we got a motion to go in camera again, please. What do you see? It is three twenty-nine, so we'll reconvene next door in ten minutes.